Okay. Everyone all set? I'll call the Londonderry Planning Board meeting to order for June 4th, 2014. Right first thing of business, I just want to point out for everyone here that this room has two exits, and on the right-hand side, the audience, in front and the back of the room, if we need to evacuate for any reason, we ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you, go outside, move away from the building, don't come back, don't re-enter until our fire officials have instructed everyone to do so. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise, we'll pledge allegiance to the American flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary's gonna be late. Haven't seen Laura yet. Lisa and Maria can't make it tonight. I'll appoint Al to vote for Mary until she arrives, and that's all I have for alternates, and we do have a quorum. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight voting members. So, we are all set. But before we start anything here, I want to point out and let everyone know that of continued plans, Rafco Incorporated, they have withdrawn the plan. So, are the, I should say, their request for rezoning. So, that is off the agenda. Under new plans, Nine Alexander LLC, that has been withdrawn also. So, that is off the agenda. And Hampshire Ventures Incorporated, they have requested to meet in July, our July 2nd meeting. So, we've got nine voting members now, so. Hey Laura. So, Hampshire Ventures is off the agenda tonight also. So, that leaves us the public hearing, but first thing we'll do is our administrative board work, where we get our business done, and the first thing is the approval of minutes for May 7th and May 14th, 2014. And I'll take a motion on those separately, in case anyone was absent and wants to abstain.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board approve the meeting minutes from the May 7th, 2014 planning board meeting.
Okay, motion by Lynn, second by John. Any discussion by the board? Sign none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions?
Abstain.
Laura and Chris were absent. And Chair votes affirmative, and the minutes of May 7th, 2014 are approved. On May 14th?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board approve the minutes from the May 14th, 2014 planning board meeting.
Second. Motion by Lynn, second by John. Any discussion by the board? Sign none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions?
Me.
Laura was absent. And Chair votes affirmative, and the minutes of May 14th, 2014 pass. And we have one extension request, this is from Moranco Realty Incorporated, who are the owner and the applicant, tax map 16 lot 66, 73, and 75, at number 137, 131, and 129 Rockingham Road, and this is on C2. There was a conditional approval on February 12th of 2014. Cynthia?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a request from Jeffrey Merritt, PE, project manager, Keach Nordstrom Associates, to asking the board to consider an extension of 90 days. This conditional approval is, again, set to expire June 12th, 2014. They are asking for a 90-day extension to September 10th, 2014. This is because they're still working with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation to acquire their driveway permit for off-site improvements associated with the project in Rockingham Road.
Okay, so that's to September 10th, 2014.
So, moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Lynn, second by John. Any discussion by the board? Sign none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative. And the extension request has been extended to September 10th, 2014, 14, for Moranco Realty Incorporated. Next, we have discussions with town staff. Anything, John?
Nothing this evening.
Cynthia?
Couple things. The CIP process is about to kick off, starting this Monday. The informational meeting for the committee to get together and determine the date for their first meeting in August will be this Monday, the 9th, at 6:00 a.m. in the Elwood Conference Room. The master plan implementation meeting committee met last week, and we'll get a little report on that, the progress that they're making next week.
Next week.
And I think that's about it.
Okay. The board have anything? Nope. We will move right along then, and we have a conceptual discussion. This is with Peter J. King, Irrevocable Trust. Peter J. King, James M. Winston, and Martin F. Laughlin, trustees for the owners, and Prologis, who is the applicant. This is tax map 14, lot 49. It's a conceptual discussion on a proposed distribution center at number four, Pettingill Road, and this is on Gateway Business District. And I just want to point out, conceptual discussions are just that, they are discussions, you want an exchange of ideas between the applicant and the board, and anyone from, I'll take input from the public also. And that there's nothing that is binding at all, it's just a good discussion. So, you have a floor. And just identify yourself for our records, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bob Duvel. I'm chief engineer at TF Moran, and I first want to start by thanking the board for giving us this opportunity to have this conceptual discussion. This is an important project, important for the owner and the user, UPS, and it's also important to the town, to the airport, and to the state of New Hampshire as a whole. And we're really looking forward to getting some feedback from the board tonight to help us streamline the design and the approval process, because one of the most critical features of this project is the schedule. It's running a very tight schedule, and we'll get into some detail on that shortly. But first, let me introduce the people we have here tonight from the project team. First, they have, also from TF Moran, Chris Rice and Tom Burns. From UPS, which is the facility operator, we have John Cloessi. To my left, we have Mike Owens and Kim Barrett from UPS. From Dacon, who is the design builder of the project, we have Tom Chinetti and Aaron Hall. Please raise your hand. PDA, the architect, Dennis McCarthy. From the King Family Trust, we're representing the King Family Trust, we have Alex Valas. We also have, from Prologis, the owner developer, we have Grady Sargent and Bo Farquhar, representing Prologis, and Ari Pollak, who's also representing Prologis, here with us tonight. And finally, we have also, from Dred, Mike Bergeron, who's a representative for Industrial Projects, in the room, who's also here to show the importance of this project to the state of New Hampshire. So, thank you all very much for having us before you. Before I turn it over to the other speakers, I just want to kind of show what the project is all about.
Probably keep the microphone handy, so, because, I mean, this is, goes out live, so the folks at home can hear.
Did something happen to the connection? There we go. Thank you. Well, so, where this project is located is on the new Pettingill Road corridor. On this map you have in front of you, that would be the line that's running across the middle of the page, and I trace it here with the cursor. This is the new Pettingill Road corridor, and what this project is proposing to do is to build a 600,000-square-foot distribution facility in this location here, about midway down that corridor. And to orient yourself, this is Ray Resort Drive here on the left, and this is Industrial Drive, existing industrial and existing Pettingill here on the right. So, what this project is proposing to do is build about half of the future Pettingill Road to access the site, and extend utilities all the way to Industrial, or all the way from Industrial Drive, water, power, gas, to access this project, and then also construct a new sewer line that the town has been planning for a long time, that runs from a high point here in the back of the site, against the, between this proposed site and the FedEx site, from a pump station in the Nash property to the lower left, pumping back up to this high point here, and then running north all the way to the Cohas Brook Interceptor. So, this is public infrastructure that this project is going to provide on behalf of the town, as well as the facility itself. It amounts to about 2,000 feet of public road and 5,000 feet of public sewer, plus about 3,000 feet of public water, power, and gas infrastructure. The schedule that I mentioned is, that is so important, is driven by the user, UPS, and their end-user, Pratt &amp; Whitney, who are looking to begin operations on this site in June of 2015, so essentially, one year from today. Just the sheer size of this building makes that a bit of a challenge. What we have going in our favor is it's a fairly simple building, a fairly simple site, it's a big, flat building, and it's a big, flat site, and so, from that perspective, it's fairly easy to design. We, in addition, though, to the end date, it's important that the site be turned over to UPS, at least in part, by February of 2015, because they have a lot of racking systems and conveying systems that they have to build, that they need a closed-in structure to begin. So, it's a very tight timeframe, and as a result, we've really done this design on a fast-track basis. We will be submitting permit applications to the town and to DES at the end of next week, and we are hoping to receive all permits, including approval by this planning board, on the August 6th meeting. So, we recognize that's aggressive, and we are hoping to get the support of this board in trying to make that happen. We've already met with the DES, and the Corps of Engineers, and Fish and Game, and some of the other resource agencies, and they have agreed that we have a good program, in their words, "There are no showstoppers from a permitting point of view, and they're willing to work with us to help us meet our schedule." We've accomplished some other things, too. We've got a soils exploration program at the site that's already been completed, so we've got that information. We're giving it to the structural engineers to start. We've had a preliminary meeting with the Heritage Commission. We've got their feedback on the architecture. I would say it was generally well-received at the Heritage Commission. We've had a preliminary meeting with Conservation Commission to explain the environmental issues, and they seem generally supportive as well. So, all our preliminary work has been very positive, and we're pleased to have had this opportunity, our first opportunity, actually, to get before this board since the project got underway, and we appreciate your hearing us. So, at this point, let me turn the presentation over to John Cloessi from UPS, who can explain what this project is all about, what UPS is doing in this facility, why they chose Londonderry, why it's important to UPS and Pratt &amp; Whitney, and the importance of us moving ahead on the schedule that they have set before us. So, thank you, John. If you want.
Good evening, and thank you for taking some time to hear us. First of all, apologies, I'm not a public speaker, I'm an engineer, so hopefully you'll bear with me, and when they said "put a face to UPS," you probably could have got a better face, but hopefully, again, you'll bear with me.
We're used to engineers, so.
That's supposed to mean.
Present company excluded.
Better put them with John.
So, look, I'm a 28-year proud UPS employee. With Mike and Kim back here, we represent 60 years, or over 60 years with UPS. I grew up not far from here, down at Worcester, and so, I spent a lot of my youth up in southern New Hampshire, and I know the area, and I know how important it is to you in maintaining your way of life, and that's important to us, too. We're a 170-year-old company, core values of integrity, of community, of teamwork, of sustainability, and it sounds like a lot of buzzwords, but that's how we live every day, just to be honest with you. This project is really very important to us, and I want to start out by, what you know as UPS is a lot of brown package cars and tractor trailers, and a lot of guys and gals that look really good in shorts. That's not me, by the way, but this is a little bit different part of UPS. This is a, we are a third-party logistics organization, but we are UPS, and Mike and I both started in the same place, moving packages and doing all that, but we've progressed through the company, and that's what our company's all about. We promote from within, we're all owners in our company, and that's how we treat our company. But as a third-party logistics company, I just don't want to give the impression that what you're going to see is a lot of brown package cars, tractor trailers. This is truly a warehouse that is going to be engaged in providing a service to our client, which is Pratt &amp; Whitney. For many of you that have flown, if you look out the aircraft window, you'll see their name all over those big jet engines, and that's really what we're there to support. Secondly, we're not going to be building jet engines. You're not going to see large jet engines going up and down your community streets here. What we're going to do is, we're going to have a very large warehouse, and what we're going to be doing is really kitting. And the kitting is to put together, if you can imagine, it takes hundreds and hundreds of hours to build a jet engine, and each part of that jet engine is put together in an assembly process, and it's put together, really, the smallest components. So, we're building kits of up to 50 parts, nuts, bolts, washers, fuel lines, fans, those type of things. We put them together in kits, and then those kits will be actually sent out on a daily basis, from what we would call a milk run, and they'll be sent to six locations in the U.S. and Canada, and they will be assembled in these jet engines in a just-in-time format. So, it's, you know, again, it's really the storage of these materials, the kitting of these materials, and then distribution just in time to these six facilities throughout the U.S. and Canada, and some international opportunities, too, as we go forward. So, again, to Pratt &amp; Whitney, this is very important. This is going to be a showplace for Pratt &amp; Whitney. This is where they want to bring their customers, so you'll see everything from the Boeings and the Deltas, to the governments and various government entities coming in into your community, and having an opportunity to see what's going on. And they see it as a showcase, there are going to be many components, and we'd certainly welcome members of the board and the community to come in from time to time and see what we do. But it is going to be a showcase in that we're going to use the latest of technology and innovation in the facility. We are going to have an educated workforce in there. Talking about the workforce, we anticipate, when we open the facility, up to 125 new jobs for the community, but we see that expanding when we kind of get up to full speed, anywhere up to 225 to 250 jobs. And these are going to be majority of them full-time jobs, with full-time benefits and everything that goes along with that. In addition, there's also the kind of peripheral benefit to the community, to your electricians, to your cleaning companies, to your caterers, and really, what an operation of this type brings to it. There's going to be a lot of other opportunity, a lot of business that's brought into the community, and I think it's good business. It's not dirty business, it's good business, and we think that that's also an opportunity for Londonderry. Why Londonderry? Frankly, vocation is one, and secondly, to be honest with you, the reception that we've gotten to this point, I've had a couple of opportunities to come up and meet with some of the locals up here, and we believe that you want us here, and we want to be here, and we believe UPS will find it's going to be a very good neighbor to Londonderry. And again, growing up not too far from here, I think it's a great place for our employees to live and work, and our hope is that we can depend on the local community to provide those employees. And again, we believe there's a good jobs, we think UPS is a good place to work, and they can thrive, and someday, they'll be sitting here saying they have 28 years with an organization, which is really rare in today's world. It certainly takes some questions, but, you know, I can't help, but Bob kind of talked about an aggressive schedule, and that's not your problem, that's ours, but what I am here to do is ask for your help. Frankly, we've made a commitment to our customer, and when I make commitments, when my teammates make commitments, we want to keep them. As UPS, we want to keep them, and a lot of times, people make commitments for me, and they overcommit, but I rarely do I under-deliver. And really, all I'm asking for you is, from you, is from that community, is to guide us through, guide Prologis and their vendors through the process. So, if there's something we need to do, if there's something we need to provide to your various staff departments, and to you, to make this a successful project, that's what I'm asking. Just have that consideration to help us meet our commitment, very aggressive. You won't see too many buildings like this built in this timeframe, but we've done it, we can do it, and we certainly will do what we need to for the local community to do that. The second thing is, just give us an opportunity as UPS to prove that we can be a good neighbor and be part of the community, and again, you know, provide those opportunities for folks here. And I grew up in Worcester, I moved seven times with UPS, from coast to coast, back and forth. I live a little bit south of the Mason-Dixon now, but my roots are up here, and it is a great place to be. So, if you have any questions, I can answer them, or I don't know what the format for that is, but certainly.
Certainly, we welcome you, and we have had tight timelines in the past, and both parties have survived, so there's no reason that we can't continue that, that we can be certainly, you know, helpful to you, and I think that's part of our function also. You know, with rules and regulations we have to go by, but certainly, there's areas that we can facilitate, and we have a very able staff on board, so I think we can accomplish a lot.
I appreciate that, sir.
Anyone have any questions to the board? Okay, we'll continue.
Great, thank you, John. Well, next, let me introduce Chris Rice, who you all know. Chris will talk about the general site plan review. Application will be coming before you here shortly, and.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you again. Yeah, just to give you a quick rundown on the, I guess, the project details. The building is approximately 500 feet wide by 1,200 feet long. It's 614,000 square feet. Lighting design for the site is still being worked out, but we intend to have lighting fixtures heights similar to the FedEx development across the street. Parking, we are providing approximately 300 spaces at the front portion of the building, with 130 approximately at the southerly half of the building. The parking calculation is one thing that we did want to talk about. I had a preliminary meeting with town staff, just discussing how they want to break out the parking requirement. If you're looking at it from, the standpoint that we took was looking at the building of the size and just saying warehouse, one space per 1,400 square feet, that would equate to approximately 440 parking spaces being required. When I had a preliminary meeting with staff, they were thinking maybe we should break out the office space separately, and there might be some assembly space, which has a different parking requirement. We're happy to run the requirement any way that you'd like to see it spelled out. The only thing that I wanted to make the board aware of is, is that right now, we've shown the parking based on the one per 1,400 count. If the town would like us to break out the office space and assembly space separately, that's going to jump up the parking requirement, but we would still be providing the same amount that we're proposing. So, if that happens, we would be asking for a conditional use permit from the planning board for a reduction in parking spaces. With that, I'd just like to point out that, again, based on the 1,400, one space per 1,400 square feet, again, that's approximately 430 parking spaces being required. As you just heard, they intend to, at a max, have 250 employees over a two-shift period. So, we feel that we're providing adequate parking, it's really just how do you want to see the calculation performed. But again, I just wanted to make the board aware that we feel we're providing adequate parking, and depending on how staff directs us to spell out that parking requirement, we may be asking for a conditional use permit for the parking requirement. The project will receive a LEED certification, just to make the board aware, and I don't think it's been determined yet which threshold will hit, but it will be a LEED-certified building. Traffic, again, the intent is, at the max, to have approximately 250 employees over two shifts, which equates to about 500 vehicle trips per day, and somewhere anticipating around 50 truck trips a day, 100 total trips if you're counting ins and outs, so you're looking at a total traffic demand of about 600 trips per day. The Pettingill Road was designed for over 10,000 vehicle trips per day, so this is just a small fraction of that, so we really don't feel like the traffic is going to be an issue. We will be providing a traffic memorandum, which spells out all these details, as well as some traffic management devices that we may be providing. Drainage, we are proposing onsite infiltration best management practices. We've discussed this with town engineering and staff, and we feel that it's the appropriate system for this site, given the size and the soils. We've had our soils tests back, and everything infiltrates very well. This is the perfect site to do this kind of drainage design. We've also, as Bob mentioned, had preliminary meetings with alteration of terrain, and we will be meeting all of alteration of terrain and the town's treatment and storage requirements. The intent right now is to have underground detention and infiltration basins kind of on the western side of the building there. Utilities, as Bob mentioned, we're going to be serviced by Municipal Sewer and Water, as well as electric, gas, and telephone. All the, we have had preliminary meetings with all of the utility departments, we've been assured that there is adequate capacity and size for the utility needs that we have. Landscaping, we are going to meet all of the town requirements for landscaping. The one item I did want to bring up is that we may be asking for waivers relative to the location of plantings, because as you know, the town has specific requirements for X-number of trees, every number of parking spaces, and perimeter pavement landscaping. Again, we intend to hit all the quantities, we're just, we may be asking for waivers for location to put the landscaping in areas that make more sense for screening purposes.
If I could just jump in, the reason for that, if you look at this overall plan that's here on the screen, there's a very large conservation area to the left of the building, to the west of the building. So, it doesn't seem like it makes sense to add a row of trees between the building and the conservation area. It would make more sense to use those plantings to screen where you would have views from Ray Resort Drive or from Pettingill, so.
It'll be left like as it is now.
Correct, right. So, that large lot to the left would be left natural, and we would just take the required number of trees, but use them, working with Conservation Commission and this board, to where they'd have the most effect. And we have some examples of the screening that you'll see when we do the architectural presentation.
No, no problem. I also wanted to make the board aware that some of the conditional use permits that we've identified, that we would be requesting, aside from the parking one, which is still a question mark. We will be requesting a conditional use permit for the use, based on the general business district, any structure that's over 250,000 square feet is permitted by conditional use permit. We will also be submitting a conditional use permit to impact a portion of the conservation overlay district buffer. There are some wetland impacts associated with the project. None of the wetlands that are being impacted meet the criteria for the conservation overlay buffer. However, the wetland that is on the east side, adjacent to FedEx, has a larger wetland that's predominantly on FedEx's property, but there is a buffer associated with that. So, we will be impacting the buffer for grading, no structures of pavement, just to tie in the grading of the property. And as I mentioned, the parking will possibly be a standalone conditional use permit. We'll also be asking for waivers, as I mentioned, for the light pole heights, and possibly the foot candles, for the spillover predominantly where the entrance drive meets the roadway. We'll most likely have a light pole at that location, and typically, you exceed the .2 foot candles into the town right away. It's usually beneficial at that location, because you're lighting up the street and the entrance. We did have a discussion with town staff, I think it's still being worked out, as to whether this project qualifies for regional impact or not, so we'll work with staff to see how that works out, and what we need to do, if anything. And just to get on the schedule again, so, as Bob mentioned, we're going to be submitting in July for the August planning board. We're going to come in with an application for the site plan, as well as an application for a consolidation and resubdivision plan, which, if you're looking at this map, the line that's kind of in blue, that's to the upper left, that is going to be subdivided off, and then that little box that's in green is going to be land that's acquired for this parcel, and the land that's crosshatched in orange is going to be given up for the land swap. So, essentially, we're getting one acre and giving away about four acres that would be put into that conservation land. Regulators, we have walked the site, and they have no issue with what's being proposed relative to the land swap. And in addition, we'll be submitting the site plan application at that time. And as has been mentioned, you know, where the schedule is very critical, and this project's going to be constructed through the winter months, we've had discussions to see what can be done to help us start work prior to site plan approval. We had a discussion with staff to see if we could potentially make a submittal to clear and grub the site post the restoration bond, so that we could start clearing and grubbing in advance of the site plan approval. With that, our intent would be to submit an application, a standalone site plan, that just shows the limits of clearing and grubbing with a restoration plan on June 19th for the July 2nd planning board meeting, with the hope that we could get approval on July 2nd, which would allow them to clear and grub the property while we were still working through the planning board approval process for the site plan. And again, a restoration bond would be put in place, such that if planning board approvals did not happen, that the site could be restored back to a stabilized condition. So, we did want to just discuss that with the board, to see if that's something that you'd be willing to entertain, or how you might want us to approach that, because when we did look at it, we don't really meet the criteria for excavation permit, because we're not really excavating or hauling material offsite. Again, this is purely to prep. Everything's onsite, and there's no trucks being hauling material offsite. It's really just to cut the trees, clear the stumps, so that, assuming that we got planning board approval in August, that once we had that, that work would be done, and the site contractors can start coming in prepping for the building pad and some of the other site amenities.
If I can, just the reasoning behind this, you may say, "Why go through all this trouble to gain three or four weeks?" But the reasoning is that, given the timing, that the starting this project, that's pushing a lot of the concrete work into winter, so being able to start three weeks early is worth maybe six or nine weeks of time later in the schedule. So, warm weather, good workdays are very important, and anything we can do to pick up time. up time would be greatly helpful to the project.
And that's the site items in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I can answer them now, or we're going to turn it over for an architectural presentation, then we can answer all the questions at once at the end, however you'd like to proceed.
Yeah, why don't we handle this, questions right now on this part? We'll get that over with, and then we'll do the architectural part afterwards. So what I'll do, I'll go to staff, and then I'll go to the board, and then if anyone from the public has any input, we'll, and then we'll have this good discussion with the board. John?
I don't have too much to say. Again, as Chris said, you know, there's been some initial meetings with staff. Again, we have been discussing again infiltration on that, on this particular parcel, and again, in this particular parcel, unlike some of the others that we've talked about and discussed here in town, we're talking about clean water, again, really the infiltration of the water that's coming off the roof, unlike big parking lots and service stations and whatnot. So again, those discussions are still proceeding with TF Moran and staff, so, and as Chris indicated, this is a lot of, still a lot of work to be done.
Yes.
That's all I have right now.
I agree. Cynthia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to speak a little bit on the last item that Chris mentioned, which is the ability to come forward a month ahead of time with this, what we'll call a Phase One Site Plan. And it essentially allows them to create an open space that if it were never developed, would just regenerate into a natural system that, we didn't see any downside from the town's perspective, because the area that they would be working in, in terms of clearing trees and grubbing, is in the middle of a very large area with conservation land to the one side, and then the operations that include an open gravel pit on the other side, and of course, Federal Express being constructed. So, and Chris is correct, the excavation permit does not make sense. It does not apply, and we really couldn't justify them going through that process. So as long as they get their state approvals that allow them to do this interim step, then I don't see that the town has anything to be concerned about going forward. So I'd recommend consideration of that.
Okay, that's good. So I'll start with a leadoff, Chris.
Couple of questions for staff. So the parking requirements would, there would be a higher parking requirement, as I was discussing earlier, for the 20,000 square foot section of the building than there would be for the remainder?
Yes.
And what's those parking rates?
Right now, the parking requirement is one per 200...
For office space?
For office space.
This is one for 1,400?
One, again, this is not an office building. This is office to support an operation where they have a lot of equipment in a very big space, and so...
Very few people.
Very, and which is, yeah, exactly. So quite frankly, the parking requirements that need to be looked at anyway, which is what we're coming across as we're doing the zoning audit itself, and these kinds of situations should be looked at as an entire project and not breaking it out into smaller pieces like that, because it really skews what the need is.
Certainly, given that, what they're talking about for the full complement of people there, it wouldn't make any sense.
And the Gateway Business District, as well as the general ordinance for parking, allows the planning board to consider what their use is, and even the future uses. The one thing that's in their favor is that they're creating this very large area to the west of the building that could be converted to parking, should this be something other than what it's going to be now. They're already working into their program, because it is a large building, to be able to cut it almost in half at some point in the future when, when and if it no longer was going to be Pratt &amp; Whitney's use. So I don't think that there's any danger in, if we need to go to the CUP process, we would certainly be behind it, because it allows for, and part of their use is assembly, even though it's just packaging small things, it's not really assembling components, it's assembling kits, so that's a little bit different. But that allows per employee, so that's why I couldn't give Chris a definite, this is how you do it when I saw him, because it's not very clear. So we'll work it out, and they'll come to the board with a request that we will be able to support.
We'll have a waiver for that one, sorry.
Yes.
I had no other questions, and I just did want to comment on the, you know, wanting to get ahead of things and getting the area cleared. I'd have no problem with that.
Okay, Rick?
I don't have a problem with letting them go in, too.
Jim?
I don't have a problem with you going in. A question, I understand the three-week jump you want to get, is that pretty much for footings and foundations, or is that for the precast and the actual envelope of the building?
To do the start work early?
Yeah.
The work we're talking about doing is just cutting down the trees and taking out the stumps. That's all that we would be doing before we got site plan approval. And then the intent is, is that when we had site plan approval, that clearing and grubbing would be done, so then the guys can go in and start prepping for the slab and parking, bring in the gravels for the parking, start doing rough grading and ponds and such.
Thank you.
All set?
Yep.
John?
My own question. When did you want to go for that, to be able to start? When did you want to...
Well, that was, thank you for bringing that up, because looking at the town's submittal schedule, I think that the earliest we could come in would be June 19th, submit June 19th for the July 2nd hearing.
Actually, it's June 12th.
Is it June 12th?
Yeah, I gave you the wrong date.
June 12th?
Next week.
Which is next week. There's the fire alarm.
But we could be maybe a little flexible there, where this is not a complicated plan, so...
Yeah, and I don't believe it's going to require your full site plan checklist and everything. We'll prepare a plan and a restoration plan, just basically showing this is the area that we intend to clear, and this is how we'll restore it when we're done, and...
What we would need on the 12th would be the application and the butter notifications and the fees.
And given that the deadline's pushed up to the 12th, I assume that there's...
That's to allow us to notify.
Right, so there would be no benefit to me requesting a special hearing, because you wouldn't be able to notice everything in time, essentially.
Exactly. Yeah, we need to notify.
So I will plan on submitting on June 12th.
June 12th, because most of that is to get the, you know, notices on the butters and for the staff to have time to look at the plans. We know these are not going to be complicated by any means, but it's just the official notifications by statute that we have to do.
Of course, and right after, as I submit, or even maybe prior, I'll work, maybe with John, start getting a jump on the bond amount, so we can start getting that in place.
Yep. No questions? Mary?
I'm good.
Lynn?
I certainly support the Phase One Site Plan plans as well, so I think that's a good idea, and I don't see any downside to that either. I just had a question on the conservation area, or conservation plan to the west of the parcel. Is that, it's privately owned, I take it, or...
That is owned by Manchester Airport.
It's owned by the Manchester Airport. It was acquired as mitigation for the runway extension project, but it was never put into conservation, because shortly after that happened, the state came through with the Ray Resort Drive project that relocated onto a part of it. So it was just, it was understood that there would be no development of that lot, but it was never formally put into conservation. So meeting with the regulators, talking about the land swap, we walked actually onto the green piece, and we walked onto the orange piece with Corps of Engineers, DES, fishing game. And everybody agreed that it made sense, that they were getting a good deal, and that they would support it. But then after this land swap takes place, the airport is then going to put the balance of the land in conservation, as was originally intended. So that's the program.
Great, thank you. Laura?
I'm in favor of the early work with the bond, and also I'm in favor of minimizing the parking spaces to something closer to the anticipated number of employees.
Scott?
I agree with Laura. Good.
Yeah, I'm also in favor of allowing the early work.
Okay, so I think what we'll do is, we'll proceed, I think, getting it into the 12th, and then we can get it on the agenda for our July 2nd meeting.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Do you want to check if anyone in the public has any questions so far? Yonos?
I would like to extend our welcome on behalf of the town, and I am thrilled as a project manager for Pettingill Road and Pettingill Road Project for many years. I'm thrilled that you're coming to town in this location. And as a one engineer to the other, I want to assure you that we work very diligently with you to meet your schedule. And so you could, you know, meet your schedule and then finish the project on time.
Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else? See, back there, I should see a hand. Why don't you come to the microphone? Okay, okay. I have it now. Name and address, please.
Anne Champa, 28 Wedgford Drive. You mentioned you'll be distributing to six locations around the US. I didn't get how you're going to distribute them. Is that by planes or trucks, or...
It's through, it's through trucks. The anticipated average truck traffic is about 50 trucks into and out of the facility per day.
Okay, and those would be the, they'd be exiting off onto Ray Resort Drive?
Presumably, well, of course, everybody until Pettingill goes all the way through, because we're only building half of it for this project, so everybody will be coming to from Ray Resort Drive. Probably 99.9% of the trucks will be making a left and going on to the Everturn bike.
And they'll be the larger trucks, right?
It'll be typical 53-foot box trucks.
Okay. That's fine. The other question I had, as far as the conservation land, so that's, I just want to understand completely, that area on Ray Resort Drive, that's shown in the picture, and then going all the way to the western point of your property, that's all conservation land, or that will be?
Yes, it's intended to be, has always been intended to be conservation land, and will be put into conservation, well, shortly.
And the blue area is the land swap, and that'll be conserved?
The little green area is a little finger of that conservation land that just comes, essentially, comes too far into the King property for this building to fit. So we've asked the airport and the resource agencies if we could swap that one acre of land for the four acres of land that's on the orange color.
Okay, I thought it was the blue area you said up there.
No, it's that little green rectangle, that's one acre that would come into the project, and then the orange area is about four acres that right now is developable land theoretically, that would go into the conservation land. So the conservation land will grow by three acres after this transfer.
Okay, and that blue area is privately owned?
I'm not sure what you mean by blue area.
See, I see, do I see a blue outline?
That'll be the remainder from the subject.
Oh, okay.
Okay, excuse me.
Yeah, that's just the remainder of the developable land owned by the company.
Thank you, and thank you for clarifying that. I didn't understand exactly what you meant by that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Yes, there is.
Oh.
No.
No, this is, this is our architect.
Okay, we're going to get the architectural part of it shortly. I think we're all set with the, getting the site plan in for the grubbing and everything, and that we can, so far so good. Okay, now we'll talk about the design of the building, the architectural part of it. And the Heritage Commission has heard this anyway, and they were very receptive, so we'll see how the board is.
Okay, thank you. My name's Dennis McCarthy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board for this opportunity to present the building. I represent PDA Architects. We operate as a design-build-architectural firm with Decon Corporation out of Natick, Mass, specializing in fast-track delivery of large industrial facilities such as this. We're currently working on a facility in Stratton, New Hampshire for Lindt Sprung Lee Chocolate. It's our fourth project, actually, at that location. So what I'd like to do is first talk about the site views and how this building sits on the site, and what we have as far as visible opportunities here from the adjacent approaches. As you view the site from the intersection to Pettingill Road, we're looking at really across the conservation and green space that currently exists, there's a lot of mature trees that currently exist on the site. And I've got an image over here that I'm putting up on the board. Oh, thank you. So the first view, I'm sorry, the second view, the center view there, is that intersection. So you're looking at primarily the existing foliage that is screening the 600-foot, or 600,000 square foot building from view. So you're really just seeing a small edge of the building peeking out there with the existing landscaping on site. So I just want to make sure everyone understood, it's almost a third of a mile in from this point that you finally arrive at the building, so the view is relatively minor as you arrive. This, the view number one is looking across the conservation land, which completely screens the building from view. The building is about 30, 37 feet high on this side, and so really the existing mature trees that exist on the site will, will screen the view completely. It's a beautiful building, but we won't see much of it. View number three is looking back at the building from the edge of the Pettingill Road that's going to be completed. We will have landscaping and existing trees covered to some degree, but primarily new landscaping, screening the view to the loading dock side. There's a 1,200 linear foot wall there across that side that will have some loading docks and drive-in doors. It's approximately 25 to 30 docks on that side. And then you'll start to see the front facade, where we have the office area over to the far right. So I think that really kind of identifies the aesthetic change that you have on Pettingill, and what part of the building you really do see. I have the rendering here on the board here. This shows what might really, you look at this and you say, wow, what a nice office building maybe, but this is really, only 3% of the building is actually office use. It's primarily a distribution facility with assembly and small amount of office. But your first impression as you arrive at the site is this strong visual of a two-story glass lobby with glazing for the offices on two sides. At the heritage meeting, we learned about the aesthetics that you want to have on the building as far as tones. We'd already expected that there'd be earth tones. The UPS logo, as you see on the building here in the signage, really lends itself to earth tones, so that's what we're depicting here on the precast concrete panels. So there'll be two tones of tan and a deeper, deeper version in the reveals. We're also showing the high-performance glass. Again, this is a LEED certified building, so we are going to have high-performance glazing, especially here at the lobby, and the curtain wall system will be a high-performance curtain wall system as well. Wanted probably get into the building materials and the building design. So if we go to the elevations here, we have a precast concrete system wrapping the entire building. So it's an architectural precast that'll be coated with a high-performance coating, and will have natural light coming in at the office areas, you saw. But in addition, we'll have natural light on the 1,200 long, 1,200-foot-long sides on both sides. They'll have clear-story glass over the doors to provide a nice daylit facility inside. That's, again, a 37-foot-high wall on those two sides, and we have interior drains on those two sides, so you won't have the gutter and downspout aesthetic on the other side. But as you can see in the two top elevations there, the north and south, we rise to a center ridge. Because it's a 500-foot-long building, we've designed it with a center ridge that runs, again, north to south, and then slopes to the interior drains at the two long sides. That provides a lot of efficiency with the drainage system itself, and how we're getting that water to the detention basins. So I think that pretty much covers the materials. It's pretty simple, high-performance glass and architectural precast. Maybe we can get into the floor plan. We have a steel frame to support the whole structure, as well as the perimeter bearing wall. This is showing how the building is being broken up inside with the warehouse use, the small assembly, and in the lower left, the office component. So it's a large bay, 54 by 55 steel frame that supports the entire structure. And then in the center portion, you notice that there's a wall that basically splits the building in two, that's a MFL wall or a firewall essentially. in two, that's a MFL wall or a firewall, essentially, so that it really kind of protects the material inside the building in the event of any catastrophic event. But it also allows for potential reuse of the building in that this building is designed, in the event that UPS, if anything, were to happen, and it need to be subdivided for another use. This is set up for that purpose, with the intent of the office area that currently exists, UPS being one office component, and then in the upper right-hand corner would be designed from the get-go as a potential second office location. And I think that's why you see on the site plan, the idea of additional parking on that backside that would support that second use if it ever needed to be subdivided. So there is some future aspect here being thought into this building as a repurpose, if necessary.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a quick question, please? Oh, yes. So I assume if you're gonna have this firewall in here, you're gonna have two complete separate fire suppression systems?
So the sprinkler system is designed for that purpose. I'm not exactly sure about how, there is one service that comes into the building, and it'll be one pump room, but it'll be completely separated from there on. Does that answer your question?
So what are your plans, if you did have to divide that building later on the other side of that firewall, how would you separate the fire suppression systems? Or would you?
So it's, I'm not sure. I'm not sure, I don't think I have that answer.
Okay, that's fine. I just thought I'd bring that up. Yes. Why don't you come to the microphone and just, just give your name, please?
Thank you, Tom.
I'm with Decon Corporation, and we're the builder. PDA is our sister design company. There are two separate systems, because it's an FM global design also, so you have two separate systems.
Okay.
We can't, we can't be running utilities through that wall. If we do, it's real minimal. So all of your, your gas systems, your utilities and such will be separate.
Good, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Great answer.
We got all the experts here, so.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. I just have a couple more things that I, I brought with me. We've gone pretty far here with the plans as far as developing the design. We have, we're right now in the middle of finalizing the exterior skin. The Fabcon, we're detailing the panels themselves, actually, and the steel design is actually ongoing as, as we speak. We have developed signage as well, and I have a board, actually, that supports that. And then we have actually gone to the extent of choosing LED light fixtures for the site lighting. They're supported on poles as well as the building, and our, the low cutoff is going to be meeting all the criteria that required for the town of Londonderry. So that's about it, as far as what I had for presentation. Just want to put up those two boards.
Okay.
This first board illustrates the photometric, which I imagine is impossible for you to read at this point.
Sure.
The numbers are so small, they're just kind of scattered all over. But it's showing the idea that we have the perimeter poles in that lower right-hand corner isometric. And then the fixtures themselves are the LED fixtures, and they'll be pole-mounted as well as building-mounted. And then this last one is the intent with the signage. So we're looking at a building-mounted sign, as you saw in the rendering, above the main entrance, and then a monument sign at the entrance to the site that will basically have the information for describing the UPS and the, and the location. So, and they'll be done per zoning criteria for signage.
Okay. Part of the Heritage Commission would need to see the signage also, to get their, get their input on it.
Absolutely.
And they are meeting, we have a special meeting, June 26th, I believe. So, the Fourth Thursday.
Just let me know if you want to go June 26th, and we'll put you on.
Well, you could, what you do also is just give the design to Cynthia.
Right.
And then.
John will bring it.
You don't have to come in.
We'd be ready to go. We'd be ready for June 26th.
Okay.
Thank you. That concludes what I have for presentation, if you have any questions.
Okay. We'll do the same as we did before. Is that where John?
I'm all set.
Cynthia?
I think it's terrific as far as its aesthetics, so they've done a great job in listening to our input regarding how to screen those things that need to be screened, and so that's it.
I guess the landscaping plan is still in development?
Yes, yes.
I'll start the other end of the board with Al, we'll work our way through.
All set, Mr. Chairman. Looks good to me.
Okay.
I'm all set as well.
All set.
I'm all set.
I like that you're keeping a lot of the mature trees and just, you know, clearing what you need to. So I'm outside, too. Looks very nice.
Keep it natural. Good, John.
Just a real quick question, especially for the people at home. You're not handling any hazardous waste materials? No oils? It's pretty strictly parts, correct?
At the moment, we have no intention to have more than just one control area for the whole facility, so we haven't developed any further control areas, so I believe that's the case.
Pardon me? So there is no hazardous material that you're handling?
Obviously, cleaning materials for the facility, which is nothing.
Thank you.
I don't know if the answer got picked up on the microphones, but the, the answer was, that John said is there's no hazardous materials for the building, other than typical building cleaning materials and that sort of thing.
Okay. Also Jim, Rick?
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Any comments on the architectural design and so forth, what we've just heard from the public, if anyone has any comments? David? Indeed, name and address for our records, please.
Yes, David Coldglazier, 6 Molten Drive. My background is, I'm the treasurer for the Historical Society, and I'm also secretary for the Heritage Commission, so your unspoken condolences are accepted. We looked at this plan before and approved it for, we recommended for approval from the Heritage Commission. We're just waiting for the signage to come up and for the agricultural plan with the vast swaths of purple lilacs. I didn't know how to introduce the idea, but we have, at the Heritage Commission, seen a couple of large buildings come into the community recently for approval, and this being the second one. The other one was the one for the FedEx ground, both of whom are, well, this one's about three times bigger than the other one, if not even, well, I think it's, you know, about three times bigger.
Three times.
But anyway, it's a much bigger building. The idea that I'm trying to encourage is that, and I'm not sure, and this is an awkward digression, so I admit that, but the idea is to get something rolling with regards to these big, flat roofs. Now, this one is canted so that they can drain the water off. And I did a quick measurement with my calculator, and I didn't do it twice, but if there's a quarter of inch of rain, they got 650 gallons of water coming off that roof. But that's beside the point. My point is, these roofs would be good areas for, guess what, solar. And I don't know how much you've investigated that, or how much it's in your consideration, but certainly this would be a good example for a roof to put polar, photovoltaic panels on. I'm not suggesting in any way that, that you should do anything about it for these people or for the other people, but here's just an example to perhaps jog your imagination about how much solar panel you can put up there. And so the, you know, solar panels for that amount would probably require a slightly heavier roof for supporting it, but that's part of the cost of the solar systems. It would also provide power for the users there, in that they're going to be using some sort of electricity, although they have clear-story windows for lighting and things like that. But this time of year, they may be having a little bit of cooling. Maybe it's just fans, I don't know. But anyway, there's going to be some power usage inside, and a photovoltaic bank on the roof would help to decrease their power and decrease their, the amount of money that they may have to pay to have a certain amount of power at a particular time. So I think it's a, something to at least be considered by the board here for the future in some way that they may be able to incorporate this, because I don't think you're going to be able to do anything about enforcing anything, but you may be able to encourage people. I've talked with a few people in the energy industry for the photovoltaics, and they certainly say that in New Hampshire, you only get any incentive from the federal plan. Down in Massachusetts, the state is a little bit more agreeable and has some incentives down there for photovoltaics. So, and the other thing would be, if these people decided to, out of the generosity that I don't think they're going to show, but out of the generosity to put up a lot of photovoltaics, then they could have a showcase where all these people are going to be coming in to look at their facility, and they can proudly point to that on the roof, and perhaps even show their electric panels spinning backwards, and perhaps getting a little bit of money from that. I know that happens in Massachusetts, because a friend of mine just built a house near me down at Cape, and he's getting checks about three or four times a year for a fair amount of money. So they're not quite as generous up in this state. And I think that's about all I have. I just wanted to get the idea out onto the radar, perhaps give you something to think about, and perhaps you would like to investigate that on a long-term basis, because I think it's really needed for this. I just came back from San Francisco, I was flying back, and over Massachusetts, we were coming down, I was looking down, a lot of places where I used to live and whatever, and I just saw more and more small areas, a lot of photovoltaics being put up. Not all over the place, but just more than you'd ever seen before, and more than you might really imagine. So I think that everybody is in, should be in agreement, at least, that this is a good idea. So anyway, I'm just trying to put it on the radar. Maybe I missed it by listening to you on the local access channel when you brought it up before. Anyway, I just wanted to enlarge the blip on your radar by this idea and not by my personal circumference.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment, please?
Yes, I just wanted to, thanks to David, but very, very good suggestion. But we're in the process of implementing our 2013 master plan. We have no regulations on solar panels or anything like that, but as part of the master planning implementation, that probably is going to come into discussion. And I appreciate David bringing it up, because start looking at all the roofs, what could, could happen, and even with the water, maybe you could capture that and bottle it or something and so on. But I'll go to Jim first, and I'll go to you.
David, thank you very much for that forward thinking. I had thought about this for this project. However, and I could be wrong, and please correct me if I am, I believe the, because of the proximity to the airport, I know that the airport had put solar panels on the top of the parking garage, and due to the interference with the planes approaching the airport, that, all that money, I believe, that was spent, I believe they've covered it up because it's become a problem. I have thought about this for this project, but I think that there could be a logistics problem with solar on this type of billing, building in proximity to the airport.
Actually, that's the point I was going to make, Mr. Chairman, that we've actually did have a discussion about solar panels on this roof, and the airport told us they would recommend against it because of a glare problem for pilots on approach.
This is just for David. If you want to check out a building in Londonderry that does have them on the roof, a wire belt, I think is about 70% covered on their roof, and they generate most of their electricity for their operation from that.
But I think this is, you know, for our own use, as to looking in the future, something like that, I think there's complications in your situation. Probably have to have angle just so, I'm sure there's a lot of logistics to that and probably expense also. Let's see. Anyone else from the public have any questions on the architecture? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the, the board, and I, I think there's, I have to say, there's probably concurrence to the recommendation of the Heritage Commission, that architecturally, it's a nice and pleasing design, and I think it was noted at Heritage Commission that they do like earth tones, and UPS logo is like perfect. Anyone else have anything to add, or at this point, any, any questions of us, or anything else you want to?
Well, I would just, I think we've had, actually, a lot of help and guidance from the board tonight. If there's anything else that you think that we should know, or anything we can do to make your job easier, or staff's jobs easier, please feel free to share it with us, because after all, we, we will succeed to the extent that we make your job easier, so that's very much in our interest to do that.
Okay, that's good to hear. And I think we really desire with applicants is a good working relationship, and I believe that we've, we've got one. I think the only thing is, is knowing things in advance, so we can plan for our meetings and what is needed for meetings and everything, and that staff has ample time to work, work through things, you know, for presentation to the board. So it's, and I think there's going to be good communication back and, back and forth, so that's very heartening.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mary?
I apologize if you guys covered this before I got here, but is it, is the facility going to be 24/7?
It's two shifts operations being planned at this point.
And so what shift won't be, what, will it be 12-hour shifts?
John Colvin, UPS, I spoke over the other, the plan would be to have two eight-hour shifts, and, and obviously, we have security staff, kind of third shift, but the majority of the work will be done on a first shift, second shift basis.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's just for anyone in the public. It's two shifts, eight hours each. It'll be first and second shift, and then overnight would just be a security, that would maintain the, and building maintenance and so forth. So, anyone else got any questions of us? If not, I think we're, yeah, Cynthia?
I actually have a question, because it came up at the last meeting. Would this board be looking for a fiscal impact study from, for this project, which clearly has a lot of public benefit in terms of what it does?
I think it would be, I think it would be good, because it would demonstrate what the, the value, you know, probably in monetary terms, that this community would be receiving from it, which would be helpful for the taxpayers, anyway, because you hear a lot of complaints about taxes all the time, which is a perennial complaint, so.
It obviously doesn't have the same impact as residential.
Is the board in agreement?
I am.
Sorry. I don't want to speak for the board, but I think there's a consensus here to have a fiscal impact statement.
Would that be something that they would need to have for July 2nd, for that meeting?
No.
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 That is just for the cutting of the trees, the grubbing, really, the grubbing of the land, because you can cut any trees down that you want on your property. But it'd just be the grubbing and the leveling of the land, make sure that the water is, is, you know, runs off of it all, is contained on, on that property, no erosion or anything, and stuff like that. If we're all set, anything you have? Has longed to John and Cynthia and our, our staff, and they relay things to us right away.
Well, I'd, I'd like to close, actually, by publicly thanking staff, because the staff has been enormously helpful to work with. We've worked through a lot of issues already, and we've covered a lot of ground, and the, the staff has been very supportive. So thank you to, to staff and to this board.
That's, that's good to hear, because I know that they're very supportive, hardworking, and do a lot for the town, and this board also. So.
Thank you.
So far, so good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I can't believe Ari missed us.
The other business has been postponed till our next meeting, and if there's any other business, bring it up. If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So move. Motion to adjourn by John.
Second.
Second by Lynn. All those who favor adjournments, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
You are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.